This is our first remote meeting. Please mute your microphone and keep it muted unless you are speaking. If you do not mute the microphone, all noise will be picked up and interfere with the meeting. Also, it'd be helpful if you turn off your cameras and until it's time to speak, till it's your turn to speak. Also, if you're watching the meeting by live stream, please turn it off if you intend to speak. There's a slight delay and there may be some interference. I will announce each agenda item and then allow the applicant to make a presentation. After the presentation, I will ask each commissioner if they have any questions or comments. Then I will ask Erin if she has any questions or comments. Then I will go to the public. If you wish to speak, please go to the chat bar on the top of the screen and leave me a message that you wish to speak in your name. The chat bar looks like a cartoon text bubble. If you are calling in, your name will not appear, so I will go through the call list and ask for comments. When called upon, please give your name and address. After the public comments, I'll go back to the commission staff and the applicant for further comments. This meeting is being recorded and it's important that only one person speak at a time and that they identify themselves. I may mute everyone if needed to keep the meeting on course. Okay, at this time, I call the meeting to order the Wallingford Inland Wetlands, the Water Course Commission. Date is June 3rd, 2020. The time is seven o'clock on the money. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
United States of America and to the Republic.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, roll call. Ally?
Here, Eileen McKean.
Debbie?
Deborah Phillips here.
Okay. Robert Simons?
Robert Simons.
Okay, Jennifer? Pastor Eddie?
Jennifer Pastor Eddie here.
And Mike Caruso. Okay. All right. I was going to cancel the meetings to move us along, but the fact that we only have one minutes of the meeting. This was the regular meeting of March 4th, 2020. Is there any comments regarding the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on March 4th, 2020 as submitted.
Is there a second?
Eileen McKean, second.
Motion made in second, if no other comments. I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, old business going on, Bowl Business 823.1, 153 Chimney Hill Road. Lauren Young. This is a yard drainage improvements. We've had some discussion with this application or this property before. And I think, do you have any comments, Mr. Young?
Okay, there we go. Good evening and thank you for having me again. So last fall, I installed the berm, the first part of my application from then. And it was a very good success. We were able to catch a lot of the surface drainage from the woods and collect it and redirect it into the pond. But I now still have a surface water issue between the pond and the house. And so I will still continue with my old plan and all the things that are inside of that. But this seems to be more of a thing to start with right now. And it is just to add soil to regrade the backyard, just the lawn. No additional woods would be altered. It's just the lawn with 55 yards of soil. So at some points, there'll be six inches and other points of one inch difference. And this is just to help guide surface water during heavy rains into the ditch on the left side of the yard. So this is going into the stream that's already there. And let's see. Right now it puddles and pools and that's part of the bigger reason I don't want it reaching the house. So how we're going to prevent it from going to the house is using a swale, guide it into the ditch. So there will be hay bales for erosion control while the grass regrows. And more stones next to the ditch, so then it extends outwards to help slow it down for erosion control. And that's it. Oh, and also a fire pit.
Erin, do you have any comments on this application?
Yes, I'm looking at my environmental planners report dated March 27. As you know, we didn't have a meeting in April or May, so we're still referring back to this report. I first, before I start in on this, I wanted Lauren to clarify, in my understanding, and I put in the report, that the deepest the fill will be will be four feet and then it grades down to six inches and eventually one inch by the stem. Correct?
Um, I was incorrect. So I apologize for that. I've since been corrected by the contractor that I'm using for this. And he's saying it's going to be six or seven inches on one side, so I apologize. Misinformation.
Because that's a lot less.
Yes, lots less. Makes more sense now.
All right, normally, wetland soil, normally, of course, commission, we don't fill wetlands. However, this is a lawn and I feel this amount of fill on top soil on top of it is going to be no detriment to the wetland since it is, as a habitat, it's a lawn habitat. It gets mowed when it's dry enough to mow and when it's too wet to mow, nobody mows it. So I made a favorable report that went out in your packet. And I could read this if you'd like, Mr. Chairman, to me, the suggested conditions for approval.
Let's go ahead.
One, yard drainage improvement work to be affected only in forecast of dry weather. Two, state table area to be installed immediately upstream of the yard drain, the existing yard drain, and monitor vigilantly and restored and modified as may be needed to prevent sediment and flows from entering the town system, which is in Chimney Hill Road, while they are working on their backyard. Three, stakehead hay bale barrier to be installed across yard, up gradient and parallel to stream slash drainage way to protect loose dirt from washing into the stream slash drainage way during the span of the work until the area is stabilized. Four, state cable barrier to be installed where new swale will meet the stream to protect water quality flows and prevent sedimentation downstream. Five, environmental planner to be notified prior to start of any work, so I can inspect the erosion controls for that phase. And six, an extension for this permit would need to be requested from the commission. Should activities not be completed within five years?
Okay, Michelle, you understand all the conditions and agree with them?
I do.
Okay. Commissioners, are there any comments regarding this application? Ally?
No, I'm good.
Hey, Deborah?
No.
Michael? Robert?
Robert? Uh, no, I'm good, looks good.
Jennifer?
I'm all set.
Okay, then I'll entertain, let's see, is this, does this fall, does this need a significant activity, Erin?
Yes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion regarding the significant activity of this application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A 20-3.1, 153 Chimney Hill Road, Lauren Young Filling be deemed not a significant activity.
Is there a second?
Eileen McKean, second.
Okay, motion made in second, any other discussion?
Sorry, Jim, who seconded?
Ally. Well, this, this is all recorded, that should be helpful for the research. Okay, motion made and seconded, any comments? If not, call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? And then now I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on application A 20-3.1, 153 Chimney Hill Road, Lauren Young Filling be approved with the conditions set forth in the planner's report of March 27th, 1 through 6.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, a call for a vote. Ally? Debbie?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
And yes. Okay. All right, now we'll go on to application A 23.2, 5258 88 Woodhouse Avenue. I think you're up, Chris.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name's Bob Weedman Jr. from Sunwood Development. I'm the applicant for this particular project. With your permission, I can just give you a quick overview of what we're proposing. And when I'm completed with that, I'll turn it over to Christopher Giuliani, our professional engineer, who can talk a little bit about the details and the impacts that we might be having on the wetlands.
Okay, very good.
All right. So as I said, I'm Robert Weedman Jr. from Sunwood Development. Our address is 273 North Colony Street in Wallingford. We are the applicant. And with me today is Christopher Giuliani from Giuliani Associates, also from Wallingford. And he'll be presenting some of the construction details to you. Just for the record, this property is located at 88 Woodhouse Avenue. And it's located generally behind the gas station. That is between Harrison Avenue and Putter Drive, just to give you an orientation. Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, do you want me to have a map up? I can just talk through this without a map, but I'm sure at some point Christopher is going to want to show some plans. How would you like to do that?
Yeah, I don't think the map is necessary until Chris gets up. But we do want to be sure this is towards a wetland application, not a planning and zoning presentation.
Okay, yeah, we'll focus on that for you, absolutely.
Thank you.
Um, so this property was originally or previously approved for a 36-unit apartment building in a single building. And they were retaining a single-family house on this property as well. Our proposal is to create townhome units in four separate buildings and a total of 36 units. The other small change that's been made is the original property encompassed 2.7 acres. And we are now with the addition of about a half acre from a budding property owner, approximately 3.2 acres. The property currently is used as a contractor's yard. It has a shop and a warehouse and offices on it. That building will be removed and everything associated with that utility-wise and storm drainage will all be removed from the property and we'll be starting from a clean slate once we get started. The wetlands were delineated by Tom Petros back in October of 2012. And that report was submitted as part of our application. As I said, the 36 townhomes will be accessed from Woodhouse Avenue. It's an irregular-shaped piece of land. There's a small portion of the upper end of a wetland area that Christopher will have to get into a little more detail later. We have no impacts or encroachments into that or the area of that wetlands as well. This project is being submitted under the state statute 830G. And I know this is a planning zoning issue, but just for clarification, this requires or allows us to build 30% of the units as affordable upon completion. The property, all the units will be serviced by public water and public sewer. And I think with that, unless there's any questions for me, I'm going to turn it over to Christopher to talk about the details.
That sounds fair, thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Christopher Giuliani, licensed land surveyor, professional engineer with the firm of Giuliani Associates. I maintain an office at 405 Main Street in the Yalesville section of town. So as Bob explained, he went through the little bit of the history of the project. And I was back with the project back in 2012. And as, as Bob mentioned, we've taken a new approach to the project to break it up from an apartment building with associated parking and utilities and grading into four separate buildings. And then we also added an additional half acre piece of property to the northwest corner of the overall project. The property is very flat and also very irregular. So basically from Woodhouse, and if you have the maps in front of you, if maybe you want to share the survey map.
I don't know who's got this. Who's got the survey map?
Mr. Vitale, I can bring it up. I think you need to allow me to share my screen. I won't be able to do that at that point.
We're, we're working on it. Wait a minute. You don't have to be quite so formal.
Make presenter?
I believe that's right.
We're going to try and make you a presenter, Bob.
Okay. If that works.
Did he get screen sharing? There he is.
Yep, I believe I'm getting there. And Christopher, I assume you want the submission set?
Survey. Yes, mission set, and we'll start with sheet one, because I'll go through in order for everyone. I assume they have paper copies or at least PDFs, so they can follow along as needed.
And is this the page you would like?
There we go.
Sheet one. We get rid of this.
That's his screen.
Let me see if I can get rid of this, give you a little more room on the screen, I hope.
That'd be good.
There we go, getting there. A little more off of this, here we go. Okay, sorry for the delay here, folks.
Oh, that's quite all right, you're ahead of my skills.
shrink this down just a little bit, so you can kind of see the overall. If we need to zoom in, please let me know. I'm just going to keep it small enough, so we can get the whole piece on the screen. Okay, I think that generally shows the property. Oops, sorry. How's that, Christopher?
I, I'm doing, you know, share it for everyone else. As I said, I have paper in front of me, I just want everyone to be able to see, so they can follow along. That's almost perfect right there. Okay, so basically for orientation purposes, Woodhouse is on the left side of the map. Florence Avenue on the right side. We have two access points. What I'll say is our northern access, which is the former Catherine Street, which is basically between 52 Woodhouse Avenue and the gas station at 56 Woodhouse Avenue. And then we have a southern access point, which is to the, which is just towards the bottom of the map, the south of the existing gas station. The overall grade of the property from the south side into the parcel is about 1%. And along the northern part, it's actually about 0.6%. So the property is very flat and has very little elevation grade change from east to west. Basically, the wetlands are located basically along Florence, sorry, along former Catherine Street. You can just kind of see the tip of the wetlands as it protrudes out of the Towers property and into the former Catherine Street right away. As Bob explained, as we move forward, and if you want to go to sheet two, Bob, that would be great. For the site layout plan, all of our activities are outside the 50-foot upland review area. So the main reason why we are in front of the commission tonight is for surfaced area. So basically, we have more than 20,000 square feet of new impervious surfaces that we are proposing as part of this project. And just kind of tying it back into the old design, back in 2012, that project had 51.8% impervious surface. The new project has 52.5%. So we have just a small 0.7% increase from one project to the other. And I attribute that mainly due to the fact that we've gone from one building to the four buildings. Where before we were kind of going vertical with everything, now we have it kind of spread out with the associated parking. So as you can see in the site layout, we continue to have two main driveways. Two of our buildings, A and B, are to the north with a parking lot in between. And sort of the center part of the property, we have buildings C and D. Building C being a garage under, townhouse, true townhouse style. And buildings A, B, and D have no garages, but have surface parking in front of each unit. And we also have a small ancillary parking lot along our southern entrance, which is pretty much what we're using for our overflow parking as part of the project. So again, Bob, if you want to go to actually sheet four, I think I'll skip the landscaping, since that's mostly a planning and zoning matter. Thank you. Basically, with the site being real flat, we're raising it up for the buildings and for the utility purposes. And in doing so, we are trapping and catching basically all the water that comes off of buildings B and D and our parking lots. And the northern part is going through a northern detention basin. And southern is going through a southern detention basin area. And what we've done is we've graded the back sides of buildings A and C with rails to direct roof runoff and some of the surface water that doesn't fall, that'll fall within the grass areas. And we're directing that towards the wetlands to the extent possible. So again, not much of the fact with the grading, we're maintaining the grades and what is on the site, picking up the site as needed for the utilities and for the structures and to be able to grade to get runoff from the roofs and from the rear of buildings A and C into the wetlands. So we continue to get water to the wetlands, so that we're not having a detrimental effect on said wetlands. All right. If you go to next, five, Bob, which is the site utility plan. And this is really probably where the meat and potatoes of my presentation is going to be. As I alluded to earlier, we have two underground detention systems, one in the northern part and one in the southern part. Basically, we're collecting the runoff from the parking lots, air, grass areas, and buildings B and D. We're taking that water, putting it into underground piping systems, and we're holding it there, so that we reduce the peak flows for post-construction below the peak flows for existing conditions. And although we do have an increase in volume, which is every project that puts down even a square inch of pavement will have, what we're doing by controlling the peaks is we are eliminating the potential erosion from peak discharge or runoff. So the easiest way for me to explain this is if you took a 100-gallon bucket of water and dumped it out on the ground real fast, you're going to get erosion. If you take that same 100-gallon bucket of water and you slowly pour it out and control how fast it comes out, you're actually reducing the peak flows and the velocities associated with the water. And therefore, you're able to eliminate the erosion potential. So that's essentially what our detention systems are doing. They're closed systems, so only the water that enters the system from our storm drainage gets into these systems. We have a, we have small pipes coming out of them to basically choke down the flow, to keep it in the pipe system, to detain it for long periods of time, so that we have very small, very manageable flows that come out of each of the systems through our northern driveway and then flow north along Woodhouse Avenue, where we are installing some drainage and where it eventually ties into an existing state drainage system, basically between our project and Harrison Road. Other than that, we are bringing for utilities, we're bringing water in off of Woodhouse Avenue. Sanitary sewer, we have an easement that already cuts through the property, we'll be tying into that. Basically, there's minor grading associated with the project, not a lot of big cuts or fills. Again, because the property is flat and the style units that we are using. So that is pretty much the drainage system and the project in a nutshell. So if there are any questions from the commission, I would be happy to address them at this time.
Christopher, could you just take a moment to discuss the water quality features that we've included in the storm drainage design?
Thank you, I overlooked that, yes. On each storm drainage system, going into both the southern and the northern system, we have basically an oil-water grit chamber. Basically, it is sized to handle up to the 100-year storm. And basically, it is there, it's a three-chamber system, which is basically one of the systems that the DOT Drainage Manual specifies. And what it's going to do, it's going to trap the sediments in the first chamber, the oils in the second chamber, and then allow clean water to flow out into each of the two systems. This way, any kind of runoff that's associated with the parking lot, the grass areas that do flow into the system, that all that debris will be captured in these units, which will be maintained biannually, or yeah, biannually, twice a year, spring and fall, so that none of the sediment, debris, or oil actually will get into the state system and to the outfall, which is to the north of Center Street. Allison Kapudzki, I think that's how you pronounce her last name. Our new town engineer has reviewed the drainage calculations, reviewed the drainage, the stormwater quality units that we're proposing. And the last letter that she provided said that we had addressed all six comments. So I don't think there's anything outstanding, any outstanding issues from the respect to the town engineer. And I think that's pretty much it. So again, I'll turn it over to the commission if there's any questions with respect to the projects that I can answer.
Okay, Chris and Bob, I think, would you take your plan off the screen, please?
I think you'll have to just take me away as being a presenter and you'll be back to just participants here.
Okay. Listen, that's it, no, no.
If I dismiss him, it's going to kick him out of the whole thing.
Right, don't do that. You should be just click on the presenter. I think click that on, make him try to click it on again. And to take some off.
Can you make this screen the presenter again? Said that, I think the current presenter can make someone else the presenter.
There we go. Whatever. Okay, so we got all our commissioners. All right, so the, we've had a, we've had a presentation. They've announced that they're outside of the 50-foot upland review area. Their plan is primarily a plan because of their impervious surface. And the issue with this plan is the stormwater management on the property, off the property, et cetera. It's property teams that have a little high water table, which also makes the property a little more difficult in dealing with stormwater. But this time, I'll ask commissioners, any questions? And then I'll go over to Erin, so it started with Debbie.
No, no questions.
Ally?
No, I was out there today, I took a look around, I don't have any question.
Mike?
No questions.
Bob?
No questions.
Jennifer?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Erin, you're up.
I'm going to refer to my environmental planners report dated May 29th, that you just got in Friday night's packet, which summarizes the project, the jurisdictional areas, existing conditions, proposed conditions, regulated activities, and the impact of those, and finally, remaining concerns and recommendations. Before I get into what my report says, I just wanted to clarify something that the project engineer, Chris Giuliani, said. He said that there was no activity within 50 feet of wetlands. And actually, that's true, but there's, there's activity within 50 feet of two watercourses that are on the town, I'm sorry, that the tower apartments property. I'm sorry, that the tower apartments property. These are, well, the, they run perpendicular to the property known as eighty-eight Woodhouse. It's not clear what they do. They couldn't find any storm pipes associated with. Perhaps they were putting years and years ago to drain off groundwater from the site. I looked at, I looked at these in April and they were both running. I looked at them today and they were not running. It hasn't rained in a while except tonight, right? But, okay, so, so there is some activity, the fifty feet of those. And that's the construction of the two. I'm sorry, construction of the, there's, there's four structures. And it's the construction of the south, the structure located in the southeastern corner of the property. And those structures, those apartments are in within the fifty-foot upwind review area. And the grading behind the apartments and the roof water, which is designed to come off, flow off the roof of that structure into the, into the wetlands there. Offsite, twenty, it'll fall down twenty feet, go off, offsite to the property, to the east. And then something else I want, do you want, Chris, that I want to go back, sort of back to. Was you had said when you're discussing how the water flows off this property, you said that the flow will be directed toward the. And I just want to clarify something. Typically, you cannot discharge water onto somebody else's property. But in this case, you're actually, and maybe Chris, you could get into explaining this. The proposed water coming off your site to the wetlands is actually going to end up being less. Which you didn't talk about, it's going to end up being less than the water, the amount of water that go to that wetlands today from your site property. So could you talk about that?
If you'd like me to do that and dress up now, I will.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, so as Aaron just pointed out, we do have these two, and I'm going to refer to them as drainage ditches. Or swales, they were definitely constructed by man and they are on the towers property to the east of our project area. So basically, we're building C is, they're located probably about just close to Bali, from the building, back of building C, it's twenty feet to the property line. And it's probably another twenty to maybe thirty feet to where these ditches start. Now, Tom Pietro saw these and they are noted in his report. He did not flag them as intermittent watercourses or anything to that effect. So while, you know, I guess then it becomes, in my mind, it becomes questionable on whether they are actually intermittent watercourses or just truly drainage swales, which are more of an engineering thing. But regardless, they were manmade some time ago, probably fifty, sixty years ago, to be honest. And I do believe Aaron is, is correct in the fact that they were probably dug and created to help promote water off this site and into the wetlands on the adjacent property. Aaron is correct, we do have grading within fifty feet of those features. But again, I'm not convinced that they are necessarily regulated areas because of the fact that they weren't flagged originally by the soil scientists. Now, with respect to discharge onto adjacent properties, one of the things that we are supposed to do as engineers is not put more water onto a piece, onto a budding property. If the water isn't there in the first place, and by the same token, we should be maintaining as much water to an adjacent property as currently exists. So it's a, it's kind of a balance that we have to, that we as engineers have to deal with. So in the case of where building C is, the water now comes from west to east into the wetlands. So while we are intercepting a bunch of the runoff because of our parking area and other structures, we've taken the entire roof area of building C and the adjacent grass areas to the north and south, doing some regrading work to create swales to get as much of that water going from west east to continue to feed the wetlands with runoff. And in this case, it's clean runoff versus what's coming off this site now. Similarly, if you look at behind building A, basically to the east and north of building A, you can see we have a swell up there. In this case, we didn't want to discharge runoff from building A onto the neighboring Falcone property because the water didn't flow there naturally. So instead, we created this swell, which actually captures the water flowing from west to east. And we were, and we direct it to the south. So then it flows onto our property and gets to basically in the vicinity of these drainage swales, so it can then get into the wetland. So basically, in that case, we're kind of doing two things here. We're keeping water off of some abutting property owners because we need to. And in the case of where the towers property is, we're trying to put water back there to help feed the wetlands and try to maintain as close to a balance as we can. And as Aaron pointed out, we aren't really getting to that balance just because of the type of site, the site characteristics as is. We're getting about fifty percent of the runoff, the volume runoff back to the wetlands. And mainly the reason for that is with this site being so flat, the only way I could get more water to the site is would be to, I would have to pipe it. And based upon the elevations, I literally would have to put a pipe inside the wetlands to be able to try to force water from, say, our parking lots into the wetlands. And I probably would also have to pick up the site approximately three feet as well, so I can get cover over the pipe for engineering purposes and everything else. So again, the flatness of the site has kind of hurt us with trying to feed as much water to the wetlands as we can. And the fact of just the geometry of the site in itself. So we do have a reduction. But we are just a small fraction of the landmass that does feed this wetland. So I don't believe our reduction is going to have a really negative impact on these wetlands. The wetlands will continue to get runoff from our property and the adjacent properties. So I don't believe there's any, any harm coming to these wetlands. I'll turn it back over to you, Aaron.
The other, if you would, Chris, to clarify, you said that when the water leaves the site, it goes into the state system and dumps into Harrison Road?
No, he didn't say that.
No, no, I think you missed her. Basically, to kind of, we go into Woodhouse Avenue. From Woodhouse Avenue, it actually gets discharged onto the Wallingford Country Club into a bunch of ditches over there. It then continues to flow north, gets picked up in what, it gets picked up in another state system that's part, that's in east center, I'm sorry, Center Street. And from there, it continues to flow north across Center Street and then gets discharged into an easement that's on private property. It never goes into Harrison. Our, our stormwater, other than what might flow over land from, say, the northern part of the project, never gets into Harrison Road.
No, I didn't think it did.
But just, just for clarification, you did make the reference to Harrison Road in your presentation, and that's where Aaron is picking you up.
Yeah, it's actually here, I'm seeing, it should be Harrison Avenue. We have both Harrison Road and Harrison Avenue. I misspoke. It's Harrison Avenue, yes.
Okay.
I think I might have said near Harrison Avenue. Well, I said road, but near Harrison Avenue is where our discharge point is. But we do not have any drainage going into Harrison Avenue.
All right, so, but that's for the proposed, in your proposed scenario, the stormwater, most of the stormwater, well, I think eighty percent of the stormwater flows on your site, leave the site. Go into this three hundred and forty-five foot long utility that you're proposed to put in Woodhouse to connect to the state system, right? Then go north and then discharges to the northwest to some property located between Williams Place, East Main Street and Center Street. Isn't that right? That's where it's going to dis-
Eventually, yes. But where we are discharged, what I would say is our discharge point is the manhole in Woodhouse Avenue. So we're tying into an existing manual for the state drainage system in Woodhouse. And then, yes, eventually it does continue to flow north and flow to the outfall that you just spoke of. Yes.
Okay. Now, the reason I bring that up is because part of our surfaced area provision, I'm speaking to the commission now, part of the, that provision, what it says in there, it's all about creating surfaced areas and likely to impact wetlands or watercourses. So that's how that surface area provision is tied in to the health of wetlands. Because ultimately, all water goes somewhere, eventually getting into Long Island Sound. In this case, the water leaving your site is going to enter a pipe and it's going to be discharged to an unnamed stream that's located behind Williams, the houses on Williams Place. And the next property is the Center Street, on that side of Center Street. Anyway, this, that's why, how it ties into the wetland commission's purview is to think about how that stream is going to get impacted by this development or any development that discharges water in there. Anyway, that, that particular intersection, that particular discharge outfall is of, is of concern. I know this developer needs a state permit, is seeking a state per, for that hookup. He's likely to get the state permit. That's fine. Just wanted folks to know that that discharge area is in disrepair, is in great disrepair. The outfall is broken, the state. The town thinks the state, the state's outfall pipe is broken today, spoke with the state, they don't even think it's their pipe. So there's, there's discussions back and forth as to what responsibility the town bears and what responsibility the state will bear to fix this outfall. The outfall structures are broken and it's, it's the worst case of erosion I've seen in town. To this street and the loss of property. That is not, that is something to be resolved between the town and the state. But that's how it ties back into the surface area provision and, and the role of the wetland commission. That has, that is not the concern of this commission. We go through this approval.
Let's move on then.
Okay, so as far as my report goes, I go into great detail reviewing it. There's been great back and forth. They submitted, and this application was received, would have been received at the April meeting, if we had an April meeting, but that meeting was canceled due to the COVID. So there's been a lot of back and forth between the town engineer, the applicant, me and the applicant, comments, two sets of comments back and forth, all this material, all these materials from doctor packets. So right now, what it boils down to, the issues that we've been working on this week was a de-watering plan due to the high groundwater table. The groundwater is about at four feet under the ground and some spots, five feet and six feet. So there's a high groundwater table here due to the fact that it was filled years ago. It's a filled wetland years and years ago. So I felt a de-watering plan might, was in order for when they're going to be putting in their sewers or putting in their detention facility units. And so maybe they want to address their de-watering plan. And before we get to that, tied into that is that because this site is so flat and because the groundwater is up so high, they cannot, I asked them to put in temporary sed basins. And they can't do that. It cannot provide temporary sed basins with what construction sites can provide. But they can't because if they dig down, they're going to hit water. So there was a concern, okay, but what do you do at this construction site halfway through construction? When we get these big rainstorms, where is this dirty water going to go? It can't go into the new state system. The state won't allow a discharge of dirty water. So this week, I was back and forth with the engineer and the developer, and maybe Bob, you want to address that, what you've come up with so far on that end?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Christopher, we're going to talk about some of the technical things. But there are actually two areas that Aaron's sort of touching on. One is just the, the normal erosion controls that we would be placing around any construction site. And we just talked as recently as about four o'clock today about potentially dividing the site into segments. We're obviously not going to open up this entire property at one time and build all four foundations and put all the utilities in throughout the site. So by, our plan is at this point to work on the northern portion of the site first. If we do that and we basically bisect the site with a silt fence, right now, we're showing a perimeter silt fence around the entire property. If we were to bisect this site in about the middle of it, so we could have access to the construction site through the northern entrance or the entrance to the left of the gas station. That would allow us to sort of control that disturbed area and have the remainder of the site stay in its current condition, undisturbed and allow for some small amount of infiltration. And if nothing else, just the ability for the water to dissipate before it gets down into the wetland areas. So we think just the natural flows will do a good job of cleaning the water. So, so that's the, the first area of just the, the general erosion control efforts. The de-watering settlement basin is another thing Aaron brought up, and that would be for areas such as if we're trenching for the foundations or connecting to the water sewer lines, we have trenches open. We get a heavy rain or high water table. High water table is less of an issue because you end up having clean water being pumped out of those trenches. But if we have a, a foundation hole open, we get a thunderstorm like we did today, it fills up with water. We come back tomorrow and we need to work on or want to work on it without waiting for it to evaporate or absorb into the ground. We'd need to pump that water. So the conversation we've been having with Aaron has been what type of system can we utilize to pump that water out of those trenches in a way to settle out the silts and then allow the clean freshwater to discharge offsite like it naturally does now? And in the package, we included a couple of examples out of the stormwater manual that describe different types of settling basins. Basically, they're made out of silt fence and hay bales, and you pump the water into a, a called a bin. You make a frame of these hay bales, stake them to the ground, and then we pump the water into that. And when it fills up and then the water overflows, it has a chance to settle out. We think that that's the most appropriate design for the fact that we can relocate that as we need it. We don't have to build it on day one because we may never need it at all depending on the storm conditions. But if we happen to have a situation where we find a need to pump one of our holes out, whether it's again, a foundation hole or a utility line trench or something like that. It'll allow us to construct this temporary basin, pump the water into it and clean the water. And we can locate that in different places on the property depending on which foundation we're working on at a given time. So those are, I think, the two things that we've been able to do that I hope addresses Aaron's concerns. I don't know if Christopher, you have anything additional to add to that?
No, I believe that you have eloquently said exactly what you and I have been discussing, and I know you've been discussing with Aaron. I really don't have anything to add from a technical standpoint, as long as we follow those guidelines for erosion control and react accordingly. I don't believe there's going to be a problem with this site.
Well, I want to make sure there's not going to be a problem in the construction phase with dirty water leaving the site. That, that's my concern. So if, if, if we go ahead with this, I, the erosion control plan needs to be revised to depict what you, you both have just discussed. The de-watering plant and the, the sectoring, sectoring off with state hay bales like Bob described for the various units that are being worked on at that time. I would also like, as I called for months ago, the, along the southeastern border, if we could do, instead of just a silt fence, do a silt fence, hay bale, silt fence sandwich. Because that's the low point on the property. And as Bob and I talked about this afternoon, maybe that's not only you, but that unit in front of theirs, I understand the last unit that's. So maybe that low point can act as a sort of flat temporary sed basin with, with a semi-circular affair with hay bales around. And then I thought that, Bob, you thought that was a good idea for that. To prevent, the ultimately, we're trying to keep the water from going into that wetland with sediment into.
Yes, I agree. That's, that's definitely, I honestly believe that just a silt fence alone, because of the flatness of the site, while it brings up some construction difficulties, at the same time, the velocities are almost zero because there's really no fast flows because the water's not moving down a steep slope. Typically, we put hay bale back up behind silt fence because there are steep slopes and high velocity. And we're trying to catch the water so it doesn't knock a silt fence over, breach a silt fence, and then cause problems downstream. I, I'm not opposed to a small area of hay bales if, if there's a particular location, Aaron, you find when we're doing our site inspection prior to construction, that you feel it needs some additional protection. I just don't think it's something that's necessary to be on the entire site. So that, that's, that's my only resistance to. I just hate to waste time and money and energy on things that I don't believe are necessary. If it's something that you feel is really critical, I'm willing to accommodate those needs.
Well, I think the southwest, southeastern corner is the most critical.
Well, it's too much.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, do you want me to go over the suggested conditions of approval?
Well, have, have you reviewed Aaron's conditions of approval? On her recommendation, on her report?
Yes, I don't think there's anything that either is, hasn't already been addressed or can't be addressed. So I, I don't have any concerns with what she has written.
So you're in agreement with all of them?
Yes.
So Aaron, if they're in agreement- So Aaron, if they're in agreement with all of them, what, are you in agreement with this project? Are you ready to, to approve this project?
Yes, except my number one and two under, that I've written in the report, conditions of, of approval. I just wanted, and they needed to be edited from what we passed tonight. Like for instance, number one says the de-watering plan to be submitted. Um, I would like them to submit something that sort of characterizes what Bob has laid out tonight for the de-watering plan. Number two was, um, uh, something to handle the sedimented construction phase flows. So again, to submit something in paper that kind of characterizes what Bob and Chris just talked about.
Okay, so those would be conditions of approval, eliminating one and two on your printed list.
In place of one and two.
In place of one and two.
It's one, it goes eight conditions of.
Okay. Commissioners, I'm, I'm commissioners, you've heard presentation, you heard Aaron's comments. Uh, do the commissioners have any reports, any comments, Scotty? Michael?
No.
Ellie?
None from.
Deborah?
No.
Robert?
No.
Jennifer?
Nothing from me.
Wow. I'm, I'm going to tell you, everybody's going to like me on this television show. This is, uh, nobody has any comments. Uh. Do I have any comments? I, I'm not sure I have any comments other than this is a large site. It's a, it's a flat site. It's a, it's a wet site, a filled wetland, as Bob pointed out. Um, but Aaron has addressed the issues. Of course, you've had three months to work on them uninterrupted from the commission. So, um, if everybody understands the, the first two conditions that Aaron has changed on her report. I'll entertain a motion regarding the significant activity of this application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on application. A twenty dash three point two fifty-two fifty-eight eighty-eight Woodhouse Avenue, Sunwood Development Corporation apartment complex. Be considered not a significant activity.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second, Carissa.
Motion made second. There's, uh, no discussion. A call for vote. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? None. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application. As submitted with Aaron's recommended conditions, including the change of item one and item two.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on application A twenty dash three point two fifty-two fifty-eight and eighty-eight Woodhouse Avenue. Sunwood Development Corporation apartment complex be approved as submitted and with the conditions. Of approval as noted in the May twenty-nine planners report. Um, with a change of conditions, one and two, that the de-watering plan and construction base site flows be. Submitted on paper and three through eight.
Motion made. Is there a second? Second.
McKean, second. Oh, sorry. Simon's got it.
Robert. Okay, motion made a second. Is there any, not any further discussion? A call for a vote. Deborah?
Yes.
Ellie?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. But, uh, I think we're all set there, right, Aaron? There's also the standard, uh, in, uh, having Aaron investigate before you start construction. All that, we need to go through that. You've, you've been there before.
Yes, absolutely. Mr. Chairman and commissioners, thank you very much. I know this was a, a new process. I'm pleased with how smoothly it went. I was pleasantly surprised. So thank you very much for your time.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I have a, a technical assistant to my right. Uh, that, uh, has been a major asset to this program. Oh, uh, if I could bring her around the time we'd have, if you wanted to take it at her house and we would have had it at her house. So at least Meister. Well, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
We're, I'm gonna say, thank you all very much.
Take care.
Thanks. Okay, we have some new applications that have come in, but, uh, they're, they're just in for, um. They're in on the agenda. I don't think we need to go, you want to go through? But that. Yeah, we've received them and, and, uh, they've, both of them, you can look them over, but they've been approved administratively. So they're not, uh. Earth, earth shattering. Uh, the first couple of them, the next, the next ones, you, you got a packet. Uh, today, did they get it, get it today or is it going out tomorrow? When's it, the one you gave me? Oh, you'll get it next week. There's, there's a pretty good three, three applications. Hopefully we'll be back in, in a live meeting, but we can handle that. Reports and communications are pretty straightforward. The things that happen on a regular basis. Um, getting into violations though, let's, let's, uh, wrap this up with the violations. Notice of violation twelve forty-five Old Colony Road in Quinnipiac River. Jersey Patel?
I don't, I don't expect them tonight.
Okay, Aaron, you said, you, what's your going on?
I've been chasing them down since February, trying to get them to put up, uh, erosion control along the road that was filled. They haven't done that apparently. Apparently they did it, uh, Friday, but I haven't been able to look at it yet. But I will say what, why there's, one reason they're stalling is they are waiting for a directive, an order from planning and zoning to get the fill out. And as you know, our town plan is on maternity leave and it's sort of, uh, the person filling in, it hasn't made it a priority. So it hasn't happened.
On the back burner.
Yeah.
Okay. Going on to the second notice of violation nine fifty, South Colony Road. Um, N I R S J car wash facility.
Okay, I don't expect them tonight, but I'll fill you in on what's happening with that. Um, in the packet, materials went out. They were directed to get an engineer to survey where the fill, this is a lot of fill. To survey where exactly on the land the fill is and how much of it was in the floodplain. They got OCC to do that. That report went out in the packets. A fair amount of it is in the floodplain. So the, um. As you know, the, the flood regulations are housed in the zoning regulations. So the planning department was called in on that. Because they will need a directive from the planning department to tell them to get the flood, uh, the material of the floodplain out or provide compensatory flood storage. Actually, I was very pleased last Friday, the planning and zoning commission did send that letter to them, but I've been waiting on that. I would advise that fills come out. It's that there's about six trees that are going to die unless that fill comes out. Uh, obviously the fill in the floodplain has to come out.
Okay. All right. Um. Going on to the next notice of violation, one twenty-two Chimney Hill Road encroachment, one, one twenty-two Chimney Hill Road. On a, an encroachment on one ten Chimney Hill Road. Are they with us tonight?
This is Stephen Reed. He was there at the beginning. Is he still with us?
I don't know, Katie. Yes. Yes, sir, Mr. Reed. There no, hang on a minute.
I know.
True. Isn't your.
Trying to, can you unmute yourself?
He's unmuted, I think.
We can't hear you.
Mr. Reed? Can you unmute yourself?
He is unmuted, but we don't hear anything.
Welcome to the cross here.
Well, now he's muted. Now he's unmuted.
How about now, Mr. Reed?
Volume?
You could now have, you could possibly have microphone. Oh dear.
We have you, Mr. Reed? Okay. All right. Yes, he can hear us, but, but you don't have a microphone then.
Can he call in?
I got you.
Is there a number?
There was, there's a number on the notice.
Ask him to call.
Oh, wait, we have the wife coming to the rescue.
Those girls are good.
It could be in the beginning, when you first enter the meeting room, you have to acknowledge that your, you allow your computer to use both your, um. Your access to your camera and your microphone.
Can you hear me?
We got you now.
You got you now. Okay. You got your little one too.
Yeah, a boss.
All right, Aaron, you want to fill us in on this, this issue?
Great. So I, I went out there in response to a anonymous complaint I got that somebody was filling on ever source property. So yes, the, the filling was occurring largely on ever source property. I spoke with Mr. Reed. He then, I then issued a notice of violation. He did take all the fill material off the ever source property. And, um, I think he kept most of it. I think he got rid of some of it, but he kept it on his property and. Turned it into what is now an ATV track for the kids. Um, there was also a dam, some kids had made a dam on, in the stream there on ever source property. And also the ATVs were going through the stream. So there, and there was some erosion. So there was a hosted issues, but I will say that Mr. Reed has been very cooperative. He took all the material off the other property. He seeded it. The seed, the grass is like eight inches high now. He put in. Silk fencing along his, um, series of mounds that have turned into an ATV track. He's put silk fencing along there and they're not eroding. And so my advice, um, to the commission, I would recommend. Having him apply for what's called an after the fact application to let him keep his, um, ATV track affair dirt. It's made of dirt. It's, it's, and to keep it, um, which is in the upper review area.
Do you understand that, Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Okay, commissioners, uh, anybody have a problem with that? Allowing him to file for an after the fact permit? Debbie?
No problem.
Ellie?
No, I'm good with.
Michael?
I'm fine with it.
Robert?
Let's go with it.
Jennifer?
I'm good with that.
Okay. And that's it? Follow that and then we can close the case. Right, Aaron?
Yes, he's got to file his permit. I gave him a copy.
Okay, very good, Mr. Reed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now going on to, uh, Six Grieve Trail, Tyler Sweeney.
Yes, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, just hit the button.
Yeah, I unmuted myself. I just want to make sure.
Okay. Wait, 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 wait a minute. Hang on a minute. I can hear you and you can hear us, but I can't see you.
Oh, let me see if I can figure out how to turn that on.
But they don't really have to.
No, they don't have to.
They don't do.
Uh, I don't know if anybody has a tip on, uh.
Okay, we can, we can move on.
Okay.
All right. Um, Aaron, you want to fill us in on this project?
Um, yes, I got it. Again, I responded to an anonymous complaint of filling at Six Grieve Trail. That's a property located right on the Spring Lake with front ditch on Spring Lake. I went out there and saw a fresh pile of fill. I don't know if you can get a shot of this. Um, can, can we put this up?
Has everybody got a, can see that?
Or do you have to hold it back further maybe?
Yeah, we all have the photo.
Okay.
Yes, this went out with the report. Um, this is quite a pile of fill. And so in researching it, um, I discovered further, it's not. It's on an adjacent property. It's not on Six Grieve Trail, but it's been deposited on the adjacent property. So I pursue this and the owner who's on tonight, Mr. Sweeney, explains to me that he's digging a, um, he's putting in a patio. Which by the way, he also needs a permit for. He's putting in a patio and he's dug out his backyard to make this patio and he had to put the fill somewhere. So anyway, so I explained to him, he got the notice of violation on May eleventh. I explained to him why the fill had to be removed. It's a swamp. We don't fill swamps and besides, it's not even his property. So he said, oh, I didn't know. Okay, I'll remove it. I went out there two weeks later and he had removed about a six inch crust off the top of this. And he had put in a silt fence down below, which I asked for, down at the bottom where it was spilling into the swamp further and into the stream. That's the muddy river. Actually, there was red soil in the muddy river. So he did put a silt fence. He took out six inches all over, all over this big deposition. And I said, well, that, that's a start, but you got to take it all out. And, um, I hadn't heard from him. He called me tonight and he's reported he had taken. Almost all of it out. I went out there tonight and maybe another six inches was taken out and it's covered with grass. And he, he feels he doesn't want to take the rest of it out. So here we are.
What do you think, Mr. Sweeney?
Um, so I've kind of used some very simple, basic math, um, to try to. Calculate this to give you guys a, a much better answer than, yes, I did what you asked. So, um, just, you know, calculating an average wheelbarrow size and. Now I was keeping track of how many wheelbarrows I was removing at the time, just for, you know, just kind of for fun and to, to see the numbers when I was done. Um, I calculated that out to be nine point one cubic yards that I dumped and removed from my yard. Which those calculations also match, you know, if you just measure simple dimensions of the, the twenty by ten patio. It's about a foot deep. Um, all these numbers line up. And, um, I had a, I had a truck come out while I was removing it. Cause honestly, I had nowhere else to put the dirt. I had to get rid of it. So I removed the dirt. Um, that truck had a scale on it. I removed twelve cubic yards of dirt from the sites, eight point one tons that I actually removed. Um, which is actually three yards more than what I dumped. Um, I put fresh topsoil on top of the hill. I planted seed, put hay, put up a silt fence. Um, I believe that the, the property looks far better than it ever did previously. Um, I think that it's a substantial upgrade. Um, I've made sure to stabilize the dirt and. And stop any runoff from getting into any, any water supply. So. I, I truly feel that, you know, I've, I've done everything in my power to, to stabilize this situation and. That's, that's my view on it.
Okay. There's, there's one, one fallacy in the view though, the, the, uh. Well, it looks better, isn't necessarily better for the wetlands. That's, uh, we run across that quite a bit. You're not, you're not alone in that concept. So look how, look how nice we made it. Yes, but you, you filled the wetland or you did some negative impact to the wetland. Aaron, did you say you were out there today?
Tonight, yeah.
Tonight, and, and that's the results of what you saw tonight?
This is from March.
Okay, why, why don't you guys get together and go over this again, explain to her what you have and. I don't know how your calculations work out, but if you had ten feet by twenty feet, a foot deep, which is only about seven and a half yards.
Okay.
So I don't know, uh, the size of your wheelbarrow or.
Yeah, well, as, as I said too, we, we also, well, I, I removed a little bit more than what I originally put there. And then put, you know, fresh topsoil on top of, uh, on top of the spot just to try to stabilize it, but.
Okay, why don't you make contact with Aaron and go over it and she'll bring in some current fixtures and see where we are.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry?
I said absolutely, I could do that.
Okay.
I, I have photos as well, be- before and after currently. I don't know if that would help, but.
Well, hopefully we'll be back in a live meeting next month and, and, uh, that'll be much better to deal with some of these.
Okay.
Okay?
Not a problem. Thank you.
Okay, Aaron, you all right with that?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Sweeney, are you still there?
Yes.
Uh, the patio, what, how, what's the construction of the patio? Is it, uh, you dug out a foot, you brought, uh, screenings in, you brought it back up with sand and, and pavers?
Uh, not currently yet. Um, right now I'm waiting until I could, uh, could swing the money to, uh, fill out for the permit and, and go from there.
Okay, are you going, are you putting footings in for the patio piers and?
No, no, I'm just putting down stone, a thin layer of sand and then just paver blocks. That's all.
Okay. All right.
I will note there was a giant pile of stone in your, in the driveways tonight.
Yes, yes, there is currently. Um, I, I'm just trying to prepare. I mean, either way, if I have to. To fill it back and put a, put grass back in the yard or if I have to build the patio, whatever way the permit goes. Um, I, I do have to put something in the hole that's in my yard currently. I am waiting for the permit to go through before I do any of that, but, um. I, I just know that eventually I have to put something. So I'm just trying to prepare.
Okay. Very good. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, application, well, this, this is a violation under an application A 22.1, 12 and 16 Northfield Road, over clearing in a floodplain wetland and an upland review area issue. Erin?
This violation was brought to my attention by Commissioner McKean. I don't know if she wants to talk about it. This was an application, a permit was granted in February. I spent a lot of time with this couple, and the commission spent time with the couple trying to, the entire, the entire property is in floodplain. The entire, every inch of their property is within a 100-year floodplain. It's a three-acre, or three-plus acre property. And so we explained that the reason the work was going to be allowed at all was because it's an existing home. The home has been there for years, and they're going to make improvements to this home. So, but anyway, he got carried away, and he, Mr., his name's Mr. Williams, he cleared beyond what we, the commission had approved, about 30 feet of clearing along Northfield Road, and he, he did that, but then he went in and cleared some area in the wooded, mature wooded floodplain. So about 70 by, measures about 70 by 60 in a kind of a star shape. And he also went in, this is, this is the good part, he went in and with excavator, took a tree, a large tree that was across the Wharton Brook, he took that out. And what he owns, the Wharton Brook in that section, and he did take a large tree out. Right now, all these trees are piled up, the ones he, he took out without a permit, the unauthorized ones, and the one that was in the river. And they're stacked on the property, and of course, they have to go, you're not allowed to stack things in a floodplain. So I think the commission should kick it around what, what should be done in this case.
Well, I think we rely on you for your recommendation for this, this area.
All right, I didn't write anything up for this. I did meet with him out there last week on this. We did discuss it right away when Ms. McKean, Commissioner McKean reported, and I went out there, and I told him to cease, just stop clearing. That was maybe a month and a half ago. And he wouldn't, he actually wouldn't meet with me until it's, until it rained. So we had to wait till it rained, and it rained last Thursday and Friday. So that's when he met with me out there. Because he's in the paving business, we, if it's sunny, he's paving. Okay.
Especially this time of year.
Especially this time of year. So I don't really know, because he's kind of got his heart set on having a sunny lawn. And I explained to him that this is a forested floodplain. It's a critical habitat, the state of Connecticut, forested floodplains, and you just can't go clear them and run equipment in them. So, as far as the, the result is letting nature get back in there, I feel invasors will come back in there, but maybe just let it go, and let the natural shrubs, the shrub layer, which is all taken out, let that grow back in over time. He's got his heart set on putting topsoil in there and growing grass in there. So that's the way it is.
Well, I believe in that floodplain down in that area, there should be able to go grow grass without bringing topsoil in. Should be some pretty fertile stuff on the top of that floodplain.
Okay.
But, I mean, would be my guess. But anyway, why don't you keep us abreast of what's going on? And if vegetation is growing back at all, you should see some increased vegetation right now. Ellie?
I drive by. I drive by the location frequently because it's on my way to the farm. And he did stop as soon as Erin told him to. I knew whether or not there's grass or, or shrubs there, it's, it's really a very low-lying area, and I don't think it's going to take long for Wharton Brook to overflow in, in that spot. You know, as far as a sunny lawn, the, it was kind of funny because he did that before he even cleared the down tree right behind the house that was mentioned in his permit in his application a few months ago.
Yeah, that tree's still there, right, Eileen? Behind his house.
Last time, last time I went by, I didn't notice the, the down tree, but he had no other activity along Northfield Road area where I'd first noticed he was cutting.
Yeah. But it's, it's, the forest is behind his house, he hasn't touched that yet, as of last, after Friday, he hadn't touched that yet, so...
Right, right, I mean...
I suggested waiting till August. He was permitted to take out the vines and the dead trees behind his house, and in August, it'll be drier. Right now, it's kind of soggy back there.
I bet tonight, it's particularly soggy.
Particularly, yes. Okay. Anything else to come before us tonight? Then if nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
McKean, second.
Motion made, and second, if there's no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? I want to thank everybody for this. I, I'm going to say it seems to be a major success. I was fearful walking in the door. Fortunately, I had a technical advisor with me that brought me through it, so... But I thank everybody here, I think it went over better than I thought it would, thanks.
Very good, thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Have a good night.